From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Tuesday afternoon meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors on March 20th.
I'm ready.
Will you please call the roll?
Supervisor Gleason?
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner?
Here.
Supervisor Maggert?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Nations, would you give us a report on actions taken in closed session, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board met in closed session on items from the morning agenda numbered 55, 56, 57, 58, 60, and no reportable actions were taken in any of those. It did not meet in closed session on number 59. That has been continued to following the afternoon session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nations. We're going to deal first this afternoon with our consent calendar. We have agendas at the back of the room if you'd like to see when consent items are listed in with a CA or a C above the item number and are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. The CA represents the consent agenda for the Board of Supervisors and the C represents the consent agenda for the Kern Sanitation Authority, or in this case, the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove an item if they wish to do so from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in a listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. So would you please look with me through the agenda on page two of this afternoon's agenda. Item number five is on consent. On page three, item six is on consent, but I need to read a correction to the record. The recommended action is to continue to Tuesday, April 12. The way it's currently stated, that April 12 needs to be changed to April 10. So item six will stay on consent, but is to continue to Tuesday, April 10. Then items eight, nine, and 10 on that page. The next page, page four, is all the items 11 through 16. On page five, all the items 17 through 23. And on page six, all the items 24 through 29. Do any members of the public have a question regarding any matters on consent? Okay, how about colleagues on the board? Do you want to pull anything or make a comment, ask a question? Then is there a motion that we would approve the consent agenda and adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District? So moved?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Thank you. At the top of page two is the consent calendar for the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District. There is one item, item C1. Any members of the public have a comment about that? How about members of the board? Is there a motion then to approve the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District consent calendar and adjourn as the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Thank you. We're now on to resolutions and proclamations. Supervisor Couch has a resolution honoring Donna Fujihara, one of our county surveyors, upon her retirement with 33 years of dedicated service to the county. Supervisor Couch.
Motion on the proclamation.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we had Donna here last week. She is the county surveyor, correct?
Correct.
But she's retiring. So we have a resolution honoring her retirement. I'm going to read that. I'm going to turn it over to Greg Fenton, and I'm going to allow him to say a few words, and then of course Donna can say, she can tell us off if she wants to, I guess. This is a resolution honoring and commending Donna Fujihara upon her retirement with 33 years of dedicated service to Kern County. It reads, whereas Donna Fujihara began her career with the Public Works Department on October 1, 1984, as an Engineering Aid One on a field survey crew within the county surveyor's office. She was promoted to Engineering Aid Two in September, 1985, and then to Engineering Aid Three in January, 1989. And during that same year, she obtained her Land Surveyor in Training Certificate and she was promoted to Engineering Assistant in July, 1990, where she started preparing legal descriptions for the alignments and interchanges of what is now the West Side Parkway and in the future, West and South Beltways. During this time, she obtained her State Engineer in Training Certificate and became a California Licensed Land Surveyor. In April, 1999, Ms. Fujihara was promoted to Engineer One and began to work as a design engineer in the Roads Department. She was promoted to Engineer Two in May, 2002. Her work eventually brought her back to performing survey work where she prepared legal descriptions for right-of-way acquisitions and was involved in revising the alignments and preparing the legal descriptions for road projects for the Thomas Roads Improvement Project. In February, 2007, Ms. Fujihara returned to the county surveyor's office with a promotion to Engineer Three. In October 7, 2007, she was promoted to Supervising Engineer and was sworn in as Deputy County Surveyor until 2012, when upon the retirement of the county surveyor, she became Acting County Surveyor. In February, 2013, she was promoted to Engineering Manager and a month later was appointed by the Board of Supervisors as County Surveyor, a position she has held until today. Donna Fujihara's dedication to helping land surveyors at both the state and local levels and her commitment to serving the public has earned her the respect and admiration of both her peers and colleagues. Her knowledge and expertise and experience in the laws and practices of land surveying will be greatly missed, and she has wished the very best in all of her future endeavors. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Kern, State of California, does hereby honor and commend Donna Fujihara upon her retirement with 33 years of dedicated service to Kern County. It's signed by all the members of the Board of Supervisors, dated today, March 20, 2018. I'm going to turn it over to, I'm going to give this to Donna, but I'm going to turn it over to Greg Fenton to give us a couple of comments about her.
Thank you Supervisor Couch. Chairman Maggert, members of the board, it's a privilege today to be here with Donna Fujihara on her retirement. Thirty-three years, a long time. You heard quite a lineup of what she's done since 1984. One of the things that stands out to me is that she came onboard with the county as an Engineer Aid One. That is, the entry level of the engineering series, and 33 years later, she's retiring as an Engineering Manager and your county surveyor, which is pretty impressive. She's gone through a lot of positions over the years, and she's worked hard to get there. So I'm happy for her. I'm going to miss her. She's done a great job over the years. Our paths crossed here and there over the 30-some years that we've worked together, and I was glad to see her get back into the county surveyor role where I could work more closely with her. One of the things that's not on the list that you may not be aware of, but I thought of it earlier today, Donna has a degree in meteorology from the University of Hawaii, although I'm not sure because she doesn't tell me about these events and give me all the details that we need to know. But again, she's done a great job, and I'm real happy for her and all of the accomplishments that she's done. And with that, I'm going to quit talking and let her say a few words.
Donna, I only have one question for you. How do you get all those manhole covers to line up exactly with the surface of the street? That's always baffled me. But I'm glad you did.
Precise surveying.
Precise surveying, yeah.
I can't believe it's been 33 years. I've enjoyed helping the public and assisting the local engineers and surveyors in our departments within our community and any work that we've done with surveying. And I've really enjoyed it. And I'll still be doing some of it on the state level, helping out the state. I have a list of people I want to thank because it's been a great career. First, I want to thank my past supervisors who trained me. When I started on the survey crew as in the Engineer One, I was the rear chainman, which everyone is when they first come in, and I didn't know a thing about surveying. And that's called the dummy end. And then you work your way up to the front of the chain, and then on and on. But so I want to thank those supervisors who encouraged me to pursue my career in land surveying. And I want to thank Greg Fenton for being a great boss. It's been a pleasure to work for him and with him. And then all those in public works, Planning and Natural Resources, and all the other departments I've worked with in order to get projects completed, they're all great. They've been great. And of course, Clerk of the Board, Kathleen Kraus, and her staff. We've worked closely together on several things, and her staff is professional, so helpful, and they're just awesome. And to my husband Fred and my sons Ryan and Eric, who've shared me with my county family for the last several years. And then lastly, to Mr. Chairman and the members of the board, I want to thank you for allowing me to be your county surveyor the last six years, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Donna. Congratulations, and God bless you on your retirement. Next is item number three, which is an opportunity for the public to make comment to us this afternoon about any item that is not otherwise on our agenda. We offer two minutes per person to come up and speak about any item that's not on our agenda. So are there any members of the public that would like to make comment to us this afternoon about a matter not otherwise on our agenda? We have one in the back. Come up, sir. Good afternoon, sir. Could you give us your name for the record, please?
Thank you. My name's Ralph Robles. I'm with the Bakersfield Tea Party, and I'm up here to request that the board provide an open forum, because the members of the Bakersfield Tea Party are concerned by the recent decision by Judge Dross ordering the attorneys of the Kern County Board of Supervisors to hold a conference on March 28 with MALDEF. That's the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Education Fund, in order to redraw the Kern County Supervisory District lines. No mention that I'm aware of was made about any transparency for the voters of the Kern County yet to date. And if the questions arise, is the board going to comply with the judge's decision, or are they going to appeal? Has the board drawn up provisional lines for the districts? Or have they decided to await and compromise with MALDEF? To my knowledge, the voters of Kern County, through their representatives, have spoken their will, and these district lines are a representation of their will. We are concerned in the Tea Party that an unelected tribunal can come along and redraw those lines without any say from the voters. So we respectfully request that a period at the earliest practical date be provided in which the history of this case and the rationales given be provided, and a question and answer period also be included. Respectfully, Ralph I. Robles, Bakersfield Tea Party. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robles. Is there anyone else who'd like to make comment to us this afternoon about an item not otherwise on our agenda? I'm going to close that presentation opportunity and go to the board. Any members of the board wish to make a comment to us? Supervisor Couch?
Mr. Robles brings up one good, well, he brought up a lot of good points, but the one that strikes me that we might be able to do easily is just providing a history of the case on our website or somewhere. I know this case has garnered a lot of interest, and just an explanation of how we got where we are might be helpful. Thank you. Do you need a motion to do that, or can you provide something like that? Thank you.
Mr. Nations, since that question was asked in public, tell us now in public where that will be made available to the public.
I'll work with Ms. Pearson from the CIO's office to put it on the main county website.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any other comments by members of the board before we proceed? Thank you, then. Let's go on to item number seven, which is from Planning and Natural Resources. It's a briefing on a report, briefing report on the Kern County General Plan for 2040. Boy, 2040. Funny how the years roll by. Ms. Oviad, good afternoon. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Chairman Maggert, members of the board, I am here today with my staff, and sitting to my right is Ann Jeanette Simon. She is the Division Chief of Advanced Planning. She will be leading this effort. In addition, I have staff in the audience, and we will be hiring interns who will be creating this staff-led workshop in collaboration with our communities. So we are here today to report on our progress, as well as to present our next phase. So since 1990, Kern County has managed two general pans, with the Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan, which is for 409 square miles, adopted separately but planned jointly, with the city of Bakersfield, and the rest of the county with the Kern County General Plan for the remaining unincorporated county area. This comprehensive update will now incorporate the Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan into the Kern County General Plan 2040 with a Metropolitan Bakersfield Area Plan that will still be coordinated with the city of Bakersfield and still have the same 409 square miles. Twenty years goes by quickly, and our general plan was last updated in 2004. The Metropolitan Bakersfield Plan was updated in 2002. The general plan is more than just the legal underpinning for our land use decisions. It's also a vision on how our community wants to grow. How do we coordinate with our cities and what they're interested in doing? It should reflect community priorities and values while shaping the future. It's also designed to guide future actions of a community. Where should we build? How should we build? What are the priority projects that your board would like to see accomplished? So our already existing plan has a series of mandatory elements as well as optional elements, and we are proposing to add a few more optional elements into the plan to address the long list of legislative mandates that have come down since 2004. In addition, we are going to be creating an online interactive general plan and moving it from a text base to a GIS-based, online, interactive, where the public can very easily find out, what do I need to do for my business? I'm interested in what the county is doing for conservation. What is the county doing? What kinds of areas would be good for me to bring, you know, a new agricultural opportunity in? And so this online interface will be tied to the already existing data basin that was established through the Oil and Gas EIR to provide access and interactive opportunities. As everyone knows, the size of Kern County is larger than the state of Rhode Island. It's larger than the state of Massachusetts, if you take the water out of Massachusetts. And those facts mean that our geographical size and variety, we have many diverse communities. One of our new approaches on the general plan was kicked off in January of 2017, the first phase, where we set aside the second planning commission of every month, chose a topic, and had presentations from a variety of interest groups, and actually had the planning commission and the public interact on what kinds of issues is everyone interested in. And one of the things that we provided to your board and has been posted on our website since March 8th is a report on those six months of consecutive public workshops and what the comments revealed. On the one side, what we discovered is that we share a lot of commonalities as communities. All communities, whether they're in the mountains or the desert or the valley, are interested in more beautiful parks, not having roads that have potholes in them. They'd like to have more sidewalks. They're interested in jobs for all levels of education. Although we're a very diverse county, we are tied together with our commitment to our neighborhoods and our commitment to improving the quality of our life. I've provided in the staff report a list of who those presentations came from. You can access those presentations, and as well, we provided you with our newsletters, and those presentations are all online. In addition, over that year, we had individual meetings with a variety of stakeholders, from everyone from the Greenfield Walking Group to the oil industry, the BIA, the American Farmland Trust. We spent the year having a conversation to see, how could we update this plan, given the mandates we've received from the state of California, and still address all of these issues? And so you're going to hear, and you're going to see in the comments that you've received, that interest groups sometimes have one or two important issues. But one of the things that your board has directed all of the county to be cognizant of is that a community in a neighborhood is impacted by all of these issues. They are interested in us addressing all issues, not just the one or two that one interest group or other advocacy groups bring forward. And the state of California has brought down new mandates on us. Climate adaptation is required now by law to be in the safety element, and we are going to be therefore looking at updating and a more comprehensive update of our safety element. As you can see on the screen, we are adding some additional elements. We're going to have a healthy communities element, where we will look at air, we'll look at parks, we'll look at walkability, and in a minute, we'll go over some of the other focused issues. We already have a military readiness element, and we're going to be putting more policies in to support our military airspace and our installations. We already have an energy element, which we'll update, and we are adding an economic development element that will look at a variety of issues. The statutory requirements of the state of California require that, because we're in the San Joaquin Basin, that we the San Joaquin Basin, that we have policies on air quality, and those statutory requirements of air quality will be in the healthy communities element and then worked into other elements as necessary. And we're also now are required to address environmental justice, and so the choices are to have an environmental justice element or to put policies that affect disadvantaged communities and our treatment of where we put different types of industries and how we incentivize making sure that those communities have all that they need. We're going to put those policies in all of our elements rather than having one element. So staff continued to struggle for the entire year on, given our resources and given the size of the county, how do we, how do we bring this all together? How do we continue this collaboration? We're presenting to your board our next phase, where we are proposing six focused-issue workgroups with the general plan in the middle. It does not mean that we are ignoring any other issues. We will continue with a consultant to work on, on other issues that have come up, but these are the six focused workgroups that we will be bringing forward so that we can bring a, a general plan policy document to your board by the end of the year. So we're going to have a focused workgroup on the safety element. There are new requirements for wildfires, land use planning that need to be brought forward. Climate adaptation for us here in Kern County, as opposed to the coast, is a little different issue. When the legislature passed the climate adaptation legislation, they were thinking about rising seas, and they were primarily focused on that. Over the year, we've worked with the, worked with the various documents that have been provided to us by the state, and we have identified two climate adaptation issues that need to be addressed in this workgroup. And one is water insecurity. Because of the drought and because of our groundwater stigma, we have communities, as you know, that at some point may have no water, and we want to work on our emergency plans, our safety plans. How are we going to handle those types of water insecurity issues? The second is soil stability. As we lose farmland or as we lose other types of soil covers, how do we, what kinds of mechanisms and policies do we need to make sure that we do not have drifts across our roads as we have in some parts of eastern Kern, and that we actually are looking at stabilizing all of that land? We're going to be looking at flooding in this, in this safety element, and we're going to be working with individual communities, such as our mountain communities, who traditionally had fire safe councils, and we're moving into a different model with them. So this is a workgroup that's going to look at all these kinds of issues, and Chief Marshall has committed and been very interested in making sure that we address these issues. In addition, we're getting a grant from Cal OES to update the hazard mitigation program, which will also be part of this workgroup. The next workgroup is a economic development element. We're going to bring together all of our stakeholders and community interests, including collaboration support from the CAO and Kern EDC, and we're going to look at, what do we need to do in our general plan? Do we need to streamline permitting in our zoning? Are there areas that need to be changed to incentivize job creation? And how do we reduce blight? What do we do about our declining areas that perhaps we need more attention on? We had a small example of this, a grassroots effort in Mojave, where we have a row of houses that essentially have everything you need. They have sewer, they have water, they have paved roads, they have curb, gutter, and sidewalk, but they have absentee landlords that have let those houses deteriorate to the point that they really can't be used. So grassroots efforts by that community, who then worked with Supervisor Scribner's office and others, and those houses got demolished, and now those lots are available. We want to use those kinds of examples. There has been a concentrated effort in Chairman Maggert's district at looking at these types of, for example, alley treatments, where we have excess code compliance issues because we have these alleys. These are the types of issues we want to bring into this workgroup. Do we need to bring different policies in the general plan that could address these issues over the next 20 years? The next issue is the healthy communities element. This is where we'll look at air, and one of the interesting things that came out of our year-long process is that we would like to do a focused issue on access to health care and healthy foods. This is something that the Kern Healthy Coalition had started doing, where they created a GIS program and looked at mapping where all of the different health care opportunities are. We would like to take that countywide. We will get support from a variety of Kern County departments. We'll invite Aging and Adult Services, Public Health, Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, Human Services, and then we want to invite all of our health care providers, Omni, Kern Medical, Adventist Health, Dignity Health, collaborate with the Greenfield Walking Group, bring them in, create these maps, and look to see what's missing. Where do we need more urgent cares? Where do we have senior community center gaps? What about pharmacies? Do we have barriers in our zoning ordinance that does not make it easy for these health care providers? Bill Walker's group is working on a variety of recovery programs, and we need to address, how do we fit those into our neighborhoods? So this is an ambitious workgroup, but we think that it is a new vision for us countywide, especially with our challenges in the rural parts of the community. Metro Bakersfield is one type of model, but what do we do in some of our larger distance kinds of communities where people have to drive so that we can then coordinate with transportation and transit to overlay? So we're going to focus on mapping that in healthy communities. Does not mean we're not also going to look at air quality policies, walk, parks, we're going to look at all of that in our healthy communities. Another new element is a water element. So our water element is going to be working on the, is going to be working with the GSAs to look at how we can help with county policies that fit into the groundwater sustainability plans. We'll bring them together. We're going to look at quality as well. And in this particular workgroup, we also are going to reach out to our cities. Many of the comments that came to us at that planning commission were actually from people who lived in cities, not in the county. And for many people, they don't have that distinction, and so we want to see, is there something we could also do to help the cities with their issues regarding water quality? In the military readiness, we are embarking, we'll be bringing to your board an item. We are going to be collaborating with Edwards Air Force Base in Naus, China Lake on a joint land use study grant through OES, so we're going to be using that workgroup for that project. And then the last, but certainly one of the most important workgroups, is a revelation that one of the reasons that Kern County does not get our share of grant money out of bonds and other kinds of propositions is because we're not ready. We don't have the projects identified as in-depth as they need to be, and we haven't done sequo on them. So in order to position ourselves over the next, we may do this in five-year increments, but to position ourselves for these bond issues and to leverage our funds, we are going to work in this group to identify priority projects for parks, complete streets, which is curb, gutter, sidewalk, bike trails, and walking trails, and then water, sewer, flood. We have been working with our disadvantaged communities and environmental justice groups very proactively over the last year, and they have provided a lot of support in actually going out and getting grants for outreach. And one of the things that we think is going to be a very important collaboration in this effort for priority projects is actually working with all the communities in Kern County and identifying the top 10 projects in those three categories, and then bringing them to your board, having a conversation, and having you say, these are our priority projects. We then can look in the environmental impact report and do that environmental analysis so that we're ready. It doesn't mean they have to be done in a particular order. Perhaps, perhaps item number five on the list, there's a bond issue that matches it, but we will be ready in a way that we haven't been ready before, and we need to, this is a exciting opportunity for us. This is akin to the capital plan that you have for county facilities. Parks, of course, some of them are county facilities, but some of them are not. They belong to water districts and others, sorry, they belong to community services districts and others who have challenges as well. So this is a collaboration with all the county agencies, and we will include all the stakeholders. In addition, a workgroup that's not up there is we will be reaching out to the cities, and we'll be creating a collaboration with the city planners to find out, what are your plans for growth? Where do you think you'll be in 20 years? How can the, our general plan fit with that? So with these workgroups, which will be focused in Bakersfield, we're going to try a variety, we'll bring a consultant on, but we're going to try a variety of things. We may have webinars, for example, where you can go online and see them. But eventually, when we take our ideas from these workgroups out to the communities, one of our challenges in the past has been, how do we go to every community? So we've come up with a couple of different concepts, which we will develop. One is, is that we intend to do videos that we can upload, video presentations that we could upload, that people could then come back and hear what the presentation was. Simple, but we haven't been doing that. The second is, is that we've asked the communities to kind of identify for us, what are the centers of outreach? So I want to provide to you verbally the preliminary draft of the outreach centers. This means, these are places where we would absolutely have workshops. So in, in the valley, it would be Oil Dale, East Bakersfield, Weed Patch, Rexlin Acres, Greenfield, Lamont, Delano, Shafter, Lost Hills, Taft, and Arvin. This list has been developed with input from those communities, and, you know, we're trying to keep, you know, I can't do like 20 workshops, but we think these 10 core outreach areas will then precipitate speaker engagements in other areas. For the mountains, we've identified the three outreach areas as Fraser Park, Tehachapi, and Lake Isabella. And in the desert, it's Rosamond slash Willow Springs, Mojave, and then Ridgecrest. So in the Mojave area, it would, it would be a collaboration of the Boron Cal City. We may rotate it, and in Ridgecrest and Inyo Kern. We have it in Inyo Kern because Ridgecrest is a city. So that is our preliminary focus. We will begin these focus-issue workgroups in May of this year. We'll go to October. In the meantime, we will be hiring consultant that concurrently will be putting together a full draft general plan. This is different than how your board did the general plan in 2004. We are going to bring you a draft general plan first, and so the public can look at these policies to see if we're on the right track, and then we will finish the environmental impact report and have it before the planning commission and your board at the end of 2019. We appreciate this opportunity to kind of go into depth on this new idea that we've had, where we want, we need this, in this update, more collaboration with our businesses, with our community groups, to really design solutions for many of our challenges and concerns over the next 20 years. And while the Planning and Natural Resources Department is fully staffed with professionals who are very comfortable making recommendations to you, we are very excited about this new all-inclusive effort, where we can bring our health care providers, Clinical Sierra Vista and others together, for example, where we can reach out to our fire safe and our emergency services. This is a new way of doing Kern County's general plan, and we look forward to your comments, your questions, and seeing the results of what we bring forward. Thank you.
Thank you. That was thorough. Appreciate you bringing that to us. Do we have any members of the board that want to talk before we ask the public? Are there any members of the public here this afternoon that would like to make comment to us? Please come forward and give us your name for the record, and then proceed with your comments. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Chelsea Tu. I'm with the Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment. We very much appreciate this opportunity to comment on the county's general plan update. We've been engaged over the last year in attending and participating in some of the workshops that Ms. Oviet mentioned. Our groups, our group and our partners, who will be commenting after me, work primarily with low-income communities and unincorporated areas throughout Kern County. We're pleased to see that the county will be updating the general plan so that environmental justice policies will be integrated into every element for the general plan in compliance with SB 1000. Additionally, we're pleased to see that the county is embarking on a selection process for priority projects. We've worked with community residents and community groups for the last two to three decades, and community members have a long list of priority projects. So we urge that the county not only select projects that would benefit the communities, but they work in conjunction with community residents to select and prioritize those projects. And we love to also discuss ways in which we could phase this long list of projects and not just work on five projects, because we are talking about a two-decade-long vision planning document. And in addition, on the last note on the priority projects, we understand that the county will be embarking on environmental analysis process later this year and through next year, and we want to, want to make sure that the county also conducts thorough, comprehensive environmental analyses for these priority projects as well. And lastly, we urge the county to address priority policy areas that community residents and groups have identified. Some of these priority policy areas are part of what Ms. Oviet mentioned in the staff report, but some of them are not, and really should be emphasized. Community vision and policies should be integrated into the adopted final general plan update, and these policy areas include healthy communities, improving air and water quality, complete streets, climate adaptation, oil and gas, as well as agricultural operations and infill development. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tu. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Patricia Leal, and I'm here on behalf of Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. Once again, thank you for putting this forum and this presentation. It's really good to provide this information to the public and kind of get an overview of the timeline, since we are talking about a 20-year planning document. I know a lot of these themes sometimes might be overwhelming, or it's too much policy, it might be boring, but I think what's crucial here, it's important to, to emphasize that this is a planning document, and we're talking about lives here. We're not only talking about policies on paper, we're talking about lives, the youth that are going to be impacted 20 years from now with these decisions that are being made today. So I just want to contextualize the importance of this plan and why it's important to include community residents in these conversations and making sure that we're taking into account those comments and really working towards improving the communities. And to start off, I will be talking about more in-depth about the healthy community element, as well the climate adaptation 379 policy. And just to give a little bit overview, why is the healthy community element so important? The term healthy community entails a holistic approach to understanding health. It presents the opportunity to improve the health of communities by improving the overall quality of life, which includes a complete physical, social, mental, and mental well-being, and safe and healthy environment for residents. So we're not only talking about one component, but it's really looking at the holistic approach of how you're impacting the lives of the people that you represent. And this includes environmental conditions, air quality and water quality being some of those environmental conditions that can either enhance or impede health, and I think we want to make sure that we continue to enhance the overall well-being of community residents. And by this, I will go ahead and elaborate, the communities we work in are unincorporated communities like Rexlin Acres, Lamont, Weed Patch, unincorporated Greenfield, Arvin, and also areas surrounding the city of Arvin, like Edmondson Acres. And these are communities that are both in-city limits and unincorporated Kern County. And just really emphasizing... And just really emphasizing, Kern County does have a very severe air quality issue, and I think that for too long, it's something that we want both the county and the air districts to really work towards improving air quality throughout Kern County. The city of Bakersfield is one of the areas where nationwide, we rank very bad in air quality, and air unfortunately doesn't stay in one place. So air, even if it's city of Bakersfield, the one nationwide being recognized as having better quality, air moves, so the whole Kern County is impacted by this. So really wanting to stress the importance of bringing in programs and policies, going for those state grants that are going to help us improve air quality. Moreover, the water, the water, counting, together we need to work on ensuring that the water element encompasses all policy areas necessary to address the drinking water and wastewater needs of disadvantaged communities within Kern County. Strong policy should be included to prevent the construction of new developments which cannot demonstrate that their water use will not impact existing residents, existing communities, in a potential impacted shared groundwater basin, or customers of existing neighborhood water systems. Again, service connections can help prevent such harm, but adequate well spacing can be used as an interim measure prior to service connections. And moreover, moving to the climate adaptation conversation, how Laura Lyne mentioned, SB 379 does require cities and counties to include climate adaptation and resiliency strategies. With this conversation, we then recommend that the county identifies goals, policies, and implementing programs and measures that address and reduce known existing and potential hazards, such as, but not limited to flood hazard, inundation from dam failure, noise hazards, transportation, and industry-related hazards. As we've been here before in regards to the flooding issue in Lamont, and this flooding issue happens throughout Kern County, and I know we've been working together with the county, the planning and the Public Works Department, to really address and tackle this issue, but I think, looking both at the short term and long term, at the long term, the general plan is a place to really address the root cause of the problem and make sure that these type of issues doesn't continue to perpetuate here in Kern County. And with that, I just want to extend big thanks to the planning department for working with us, and I think that if we really work together on these issues, priority issues that residents bring up, I think this will definitely foresee 2040 as a Kern County that is healthy and moving forward to innovative things where our youth are partaking in a greater future, not only for Kern County, but for the state. Thank you.
Is there someone else who'd like to speak about this matter? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing then and return to the board. Supervisor Perez.
Looks like there's one more who's getting your attention.
Oh, I didn't see you stand up.
Yeah, it was late.
Could you give us your name for the record, please?
My name is Cesar Aguirre. I live in east, unincorporated part of Kern County off of East Bakersfield. I'd like to go off, you said Kern County is bigger than Rhode Island, and that reminded me of something Stephen Colbert said, "This is America, and we measure things in Rhode Island." And if you look at the size, Rhode Island is 1,212 square miles, Kern County is 8,163 square miles. So we're about seven Rhode Islands. And you were right to say that, because we're so large, we have to take into account the diversity, not only in socioeconomic factors, but also in geographical factors, because different areas are exposed to different things, and because Kern County is so expansive, I understand it will be difficult to incorporate something that will accommodate the hazards of every different geological area. Protecting disadvantaged communities is very important. Multiple studies have identified that disadvantaged communities are targeted for industry to be placed there, therefore they have a higher burden in health and lower quality of life, and that leads to more expenses that they have to do in, you know, healthcare and things like that. So that leaves those communities even more disadvantaged. And the reason this is important is because in 2015 November, the Kern EIR basically generalized all of Kern County for the next 25 years, saying that, you know, Kern County is all the same and we should treat it all the same. But it's not, we are diverse, we are about seven Rhode Islands. So we need to make sure that we change things in the general plan to mitigate the damages from some past decisions, things like making sure zoning protects disadvantaged communities, and not only from being placed there, but from dangerous hazards that are already there. I understand some areas in Kern are lacking when it comes to emergency evacuation planning. One example of something that could have gone much worse is in 2014, nine families were evacuated due to a gas leak that showed explosive levels of methane inside family homes. That was in 2014. Bucket sample that is an air sample sent to a EPA-certified lab, then sent to another independent scientist for verification, showed that the air around that same site that caused the evacuation in October 30th, 2017, showed 21 times above the safe limit of methane, and five times above the same limit, the safe limit of benzene. So that site is still not safe. You can drive to Arvin, take Comanche, no matter what day you go, as long as you go at night, you will see a flare burning close to varsity in Comanche. As far as I understand, flaring is done to release gas, to make sure that there is no explosive levels built up. That flare is always on, and I understand that, you know, if, what happened in Nelson Court could have gone much worse, say there was an explosion, that's right off Comanche, that's the main corridor, one of the main corridors that people take to get in and out of Arvin, and if there's an explosion there, there's, you know, little to nothing done. So like I said, you know, please keep in mind that this is very expansive and there's other things that can affect the areas. And I'd like to thank you for incorporating the environmental justice elements and all of the other ones, because that is important, and thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Jose Mireles. I'm a part of a comité progreso of Lamont, and I just wanted to tell you that I would like to be, thank you for letting us be part of this, for the community residents to be part of the process of selecting community projects. For example, particular centers for the youth, you know, we need a lot of centers for the youth in Lamont, there's nothing for them to do, that's why they're always on the streets or not doing nothing. We need to get our parks safe, you know, bring them back for our families and childrens. And also, we need a, we need a lot of housing in Lamont, there's families that are living, two or three families in one house, so we need a lot of housing in Lamont. You know, we would appreciate if you guys would look at that. We've been working close with several companies, see if they will bring houses to Lamont, and we appreciate it if something gets done. We want to thank Laura Lyne for working with the community, and Letitia Perez also, we have several meetings with them. We appreciate everything that you guys have done for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Diana Mireles.
Un momento, por favor. Do we have our own interpreter available? No, do we have our county interpreter so that they don't have to have the public be imposed upon to interpret for the person? Why don't we have our person come down? We'll have you, un momento, okay?
Okay.
Have a seat, and we'll have somebody else speak, and then we'll have you come back out.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dave Domahowski, representing the Home Builders Association of Kern County. Clearly, the statutory requirements for this general plan update are much more complex and demanding than any that I have seen in my career. I think it's appropriate, the new elements that your staff presented, including the emphasis on healthy communities, but did want to point out that as a predictor of physical health, economic health is a very good predictor, and that includes jobs and housing. So we think the approach that your staff is recommending is very appropriate, and we look forward to participating as this process moves forward. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Adeyinka Glover, and I work at Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability.
Would you give us your name again? You're going to need to spell your last name, too.
Sure. Adeyinka, that's A-D-E-Y-I-N-K-A, last name Glover, G-L-O-V-I-S-N-VICTOR-E-R.
Thank you.
So again, thank you for this forum, to share our organization's beliefs moving forward on continuing to plan the general plan update. We're actually really excited to hear that the county intends to include a land use vision that can be incorporated into several of the elements. Along with that land use vision, it is important for our organizations to highlight that there should be clear planning regarding infill development and mixed-use development with quality affordable housing options for community residents. We believe that this will really advance investment in existing communities that need it. I also wanted to touch upon the public participation. Our organization really believes that moving forward through the general plan process, new and inventive ways should be used to make sure that the public is reached and informed about upcoming workshops and meetings relating to the general plan. We also believe that residents should have decision-making power regarding the policies that impact their health and overall quality of life. We think that moving forward with the workshops and the meetings regarding the general plan, resident input should really inform the decisions made and those that are presented to the public. We request ample notice of workshops to make sure that different community residents are informed and can then participate in these meetings. We're also glad to hear that 10 communities were identified specifically to hold the community workshops. And last but not least, we are excited to continue to work with the county in developing the general plan on 2040, and we really believe that we can have a positive trajectory moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Mr. Ossip, I believe our interpreter is here, is that correct? Please come forward.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Diana Mireles.
My name is Diana.
Soy residente de Lamont.
Resident for Lamont.
Del comité, pertenezco al comité progreso de Lamont.
She's part of a progressive community?
Progressive Lamont.
Of Lamont.
Como comunidad, queremos ser partícipes en las decisiones a tomar.
As a community, we want to be part of the...
Las decisiones a tomar?
Of the decisions of, of planning. Planning decisions.
Queremos tener poder local en las decisiones.
We want to be able to be part of your decisions.
Es importante para la comunidad porque estamos pensando en nuestros jóvenes.
It's very important for us because we're thinking about our youth.
Y no nada más en ellos, también en las personas de la tercera edad.
Not only them, but also our seniors.
Queremos también que se nos pueda dar a saber sobre las líneas de tiempo.
We would like to know about your guys' deadlines.
Para poder así de esa manera pedir más mejoras en los parques.
To ask for more information regarding parks.
Como desarrollar programas para jóvenes.
Like programs that will benefit the youth.
Por ejemplo, de programas después de escuela.
After-school programs.
Programas para fines de semana.
Weekend programs.
Y diferentes programas recreacionales.
And recreational programs.
Como comunidad de Lamont.
Like the community of Lamont.
Quiero agradecer al condado.
Should love to thank the county.
Y el programa de planeación por las juntas, Letitia también.
And the planning commission, as well as Letitia Perez.
Por las juntas que hemos tenido y estamos entusiasmados.
For the meetings that we've had, and we're very excited.
Por los logros que se han tenido.
And all the achievements we have accomplished.
Y veo mi comunidad mejorada.
And I've seen my community better.
Una vez me dijeron, bueno, no me dijeron, hicieron un comentario, que por qué las comunidades en desventaja?
I've gotten comments of...
Por qué las comunidades en desventaja?
And why do communities achieve and...
Porque Lamont lo sentía como una comunidad fantasma.
Because Lamont used to be considered as a ghost town.
So ahora con estos logros, vamos a ver mejor.
And with everything that we've been seeing from the county, we're seeing it better now.
So les agradezco, y quisiera que por favor tomaran la comunidad, la voz de la comunidad en cuenta para estos proyectos.
She wants to thank every single one of you, and she is hopeful to see better achievements from, for Lamont.
Thank you.
Gracias, thank you.
Thank you. How many more would like, you might want to wait here? Yeah, don't go away quite yet. How many more people would like to speak to this item this afternoon? Is the gentleman that's walking down front, you need to speak? Yes, I thought you were moving to your right to sit down there for a second. Does anybody else want to speak after him? Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Good afternoon.
Hello, good afternoon.
Yeah, I will study English.
Board supervisors, staff, my name is Gustavo Aguirre Jr. I am a community organizer with Central California Environmental Justice Network. First of all, I want to thank, you know, for the moment for being in front of you guys. This will be my first time kind of going into general plan work in my life. It's intense policy, I mean, working with everyone here, Ryan, you know, everyone here, the amount of work, of data, of knowledge, of time that is used to put all these different elements together, to think about implementation, to think about healthy communities, disadvantaged communities. So I'm in the process. I work a lot in District Five, Mrs. Perez, you know, we work together in different stuff, different projects. So I know a lot of your constituents in South Kern County. McLeeson, we were in a walking audit in, outside of Delano, between the prison and some of the community members. I work a lot in Mr. Couch's district, a lot with Lost Hills residents. And so I work in, we work a lot of, either we're based here in Central Bakersfield, work a lot of disadvantaged, enrolled communities. And so reading, you know, reading the staff report and kind of some of the recommendations moving forward on this Kern County general plan, you know, I couldn't help but notice, me and some of the other advocates that work environmental justice just left Mr. Glenn's office at the Kern County Act Commissioner's office and got a very generalized, specific workshop on their GIS program. And it's amazing what Kern County Act Commission has really done with that GIS program. And so, you know, we've kind of, looking at their program, how buffer zones work, how permit use works, how, you know, the different quality of restricted-use pesticide, non-restricted-use pesticide, and where they're able to apply. It got, you know, I started to thinking of how that kind of GIS program or something similar to that, moving forward on two of the most important elements and biggest industries that we have in Kern County, which is oil and gas industry and the agricultural industry, were kind of, you know, very subtly talked about in the general plan, and really didn't go into emphasis in talking about that. And I know that, you know, Kern County did pass their kind of oil and gas ordinance with EIR moving forward, and so, you know, my recommendations and our recommendations, really with the people that we work with moving forward, is to really consider in that whether the relationship between the general plan and the oil and gas EIR, how they're going to work together, what the permit process is going to be like, you know, knowing that, I mean, anyone could go into dogger data, and that's a GIS whiz, and start understanding. go into dog or data, and that's a GIS whiz, and start understanding that the lack of data that's available for community members and that is technically easy for folks to understand is very difficult, right? So we, although we amend the work that is being done in the general plan on these different topics, we really think that an emphasis needs to happen, looking at Mark's GIS work on potential buffer zones for pesticide applications, for oil and gas production. And we really don't need to reinvent the wheel. SB four had, you know, a body that made specific public health recommendations on oil and gas. That's the California Commission of Science and Technology. And their report that says, you know, 2,500 feet from oil and gas production to a home is a public health recommendation, right? So moving forward, that's something that, you know, from a data perspective, that you guys could really start looking at. And, you know, to really, to sum it up, some of the stuff that we're talking about is really emphasizing environmental justice. We know SB 1000 was something that was passed that would emphasize, you know, healthy communities and environmental justice in each of the elements. And so we want to make sure that all the elements, including ones that were not specifically mentioned, are kind of purvey to that as well. And then, I'm sure you guys are, you know, aware of this, in the late 80s, a big waste company got a couple of Los Angeles attorneys to do an assessment of local undesirable land use acts or uses. And what they did, it was a firm that studied what communities were less likely to fight back to incinerators, to chemical waste plants, to big facilities that generate a lot of waste. And if you start looking at the footnotes of that report, it talks about low-income community members, communities that have low education rates, communities that are surrounded by, you know, labor-intensive workforces, i.e. agriculture, oil and gas, you know, communities that are very faithful to their faith-based churches, mosques, et cetera. So we start looking at the demographics, it's a lot of the same demographics that we have in rural Kern County. And we should really start emphasizing not, you know, new spraw construction of a new shaft or a new East Bakersfield, but looking at locations that are already built and really start emphasizing those and start infill kind of in those communities, right? Does not build a new Arvin near the graveyard, let's reinvest in Arvin, let's reinvest in Lamont, let's reinvest in different communities that are already set forth. So those are just some of the recommendations that we believe are worthy of that. Of course, we're going to continue to work with you guys and follow you guys through this whole process and really amend the fact that you're able to really listen to the community. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. I asked if there's anybody else who'd like to speak, and I'd like to ask that question again. Is there anybody else now that'd like to speak? Go ahead, sir.
My name is Scott Spear. I'm with Sequoia Riverlands Trust. I'd like to acknowledge all the work that's gone into this report and the work that will come from it. And I request that Sequoia Riverlands Trust have adequate notice for any and all of these meetings. I really congratulate the planning department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Okay, we're going to return to the board then. Supervisor Perez, you punched in.
Thank you, Chairman. And I also want to thank you for bringing a county interpreter down. I think that may be the first time I've seen that, serving on the board. So that was incredibly gracious, and I want to say thank you for so many folks in my district that were here. I really so appreciate the growing partnership that is taking place between these very passionate, often millennial types that are, we know, the future, and so, so excited to see that partnership grow and evolve with the planning department. I know from many conversations with both our director and various folks in the planning department, that they are thrilled also about the evolution of this relationship and how it is growing. And I really appreciate that. Certainly makes my life easier, not that that's your goal, but certainly makes the end product much more viable and a process that I think is more beneficial to everyone. We know government works best when the public and the owners of this government are very engaged in expressing views and doing that in a way that is positive, helpful, and healthy. I find that to be very encouraging. So thank you for being here. Thank you for continuing to push. We have a few very exciting projects underway that I'm hopeful will come to fruition with the kind of partnership that we continue to grow. So hats off to you. You guys continue to get better at what you're doing, and that's encouraging. That's the trajectory you should be on. So I'm just so pleased and so proud of you, and so happy to hear all these folks come out and giving their recommendations and devoting their true partnership to this county. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other members of the board wish to make comment? The recommended action is to receive and file and provide direction. Would that direction just be to proceed?
Yes, Chairman Maggott, one last thought that I did forget to mention is that all of this is being funded through the general plan surcharge. It is not general fund money that is set aside, that's 13 cents per square foot on all building permits that goes into a special fund that your board has dedicated to planning programs.
Thank you. Is there a motion then to receive and file and to direct the director to proceed with the plan? So moved. Sorry, a second?
Second.
Very good. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you, members of the public, for being here this afternoon, and staff for your support. We have another item to discuss in closed session that we did not take care of in the midday break, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn back to closed session. So moved. Thank you. Without objections, ordered.[1685.97]